Like, more people popping in. I'd like to call to order the April tenth, twenty twenty five, Venter City Commission meeting. If I could all raise for a flag salute, please.
Flag of the region.
In America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Lisa, would you read the open public meeting announcement, please?
How about we do, want to do roll call first?
Oh, I'm sorry. How about we do roll call first? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langgraf absent. Commissioner Mento?
Here.
Mayor Kribel.
Here. Lisa, would you read the open public meeting announcement?
Yeah.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you. Would you read the live streaming announcement, please?
The City of Venter offers live streaming and the option of public comment via remote access as a convenience to the public. In the event remote access is unavailable for any reason beyond the city's control, the city will not pause or stop the live meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue remote access at the discretion of the city for any future meetings.
Thank you. Shifting to, may I have a motion to, for the resolution twenty twenty five dash one two seven, Resolution, City of Venter, County of Atlantic, State of New Jersey, authorizing the municipal budget for twenty twenty five to be read by title only.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. May I have a roll call, Lisa, please?
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. May I have a motion to open the, for a public hearing, the twenty twenty five municipal budget?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Roll call, Lisa.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. Recognizing former mayor Tim Kreischer, my-
Thank you, Mayor.
First name, taken.
I'm sorry.
Attic.
So, Tim Kreischer, Venter City, just have a few questions and comments. On sheet seven, in anticipated revenues, it's listed twenty twenty five, twenty six thousand dollars from Longport Uniform Construction Code Office. I believe that should say mortgage, your shared service agreement, that's reflected on page twenty two. Just-
I think you're right.
Yeah. All right, and there's a line item, celebration of public events, other expenses forty five thousand, and another line item, special events with salary wages a hundred thousand eight hundred and O N E, a hundred sixty eight five. What's the difference between the two, the celebration and the-
Celebration of public events is a fund that we use for various things, like we address the fireworks. It's kind of in the mayor's purview, if you want to, and then if you want to speak to that.
That's, that's the best way to put it. It's things that we specifically pay for, where there are no fees involved, or vendors, or any of that stuff. So, Fourth of July, those kinds of celebrations are public celebrations, special events-
Right.
Is different animal altogether. That's concerts, that's the holiday parade, that, those types of things.
Yeah, so your other question was about salaries, or was it about the special events?
Two different accounts, why? They weren't just lumped into one.
Yeah, so one is-
Some significant-
Gives us a little bit of leverage.
That's not a net number, correct? Is that a net number?
A net number?
After donations? No. So, there's some significant donations that come in that go towards that cost, just so you know that.
Right. All right. Just was curious.
Yeah.
An inspection of housing in twenty twenty two was a hundred thirty eight thousand plus, twenty three eighty thousand plus, twenty four thirty two, four forty six, twenty five thirty two thousand. So, over a four-year period, it's been cut in a quarter. Just wondering if we're shortchanging our code enforcement, or those costs went somewhere else, or?
Yeah.
We were talking about with Air B and Bs, I would, I would think code enforcement would be-
Well, we've, we've recently hired a company to handle a lot of our code enforcement outsourced. So, there's a fee that goes to them, and then they're as likely a savings and salaries.
Okay, so you subcontracted out some of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which has been, we, from contractors that I've spoken to, they're, they appreciate the service.
Lead inspections contracted.
Yes.
Lead inspections contracted out, you know that.
Yeah, sorry.
Lead inspections.
Oh, no.
You know that one, right?
Yeah.
The shared service, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Which you guys adopted that last meeting, I think. On sheet twenty eight, there's a hundred thousand dollars for judgments. Is there, is this an actual judgment that you have, or is it money to put in because of a pending case?
No, that's, that's an actual settlement that we had of litigation.
Right.
That's, that's been closed out.
Can you disclose what that's for, or is it still pending?
No, it's, it's closed. It was a lawsuit brought by Comtech that had to do with the purchase of our new phone system.
Okay, thank you. Also, on sheet thirty nine, the balance sheet, this property acquired by the tax title lien liquidation for two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. Is this a particular property that the city acquired?
That's been there. That's the foreclosed property that this is acquired over the years and rarely changes.
Okay. Does the city charge allocate, and I think you do, but allocate any monies from the water and sewer, from the, back to the, the city budget for like your salaries, the administrator salaries?
Yes, we do.
And how's that determined? Is that the four hundred and ten thousand dollars?
Yes.
And how's that calculated? Is it just a percentage or something, or?
There's a workup that's done to show that, like, for example, the tax office handles almost the same number of activities, as it does for taxes. So, a portion of the salaries and wages is allocated, a portion of her salary is allocated. It's, it's, I guess, I don't know how much time is spent from the different-
From each department, the mayor, the commissioners passing the project. Okay, I'll just, how, how it was developed. But I do have concerns about the municipal debt that has creased over the last five years from twenty seven thousand plus to forty, or no, twenty seven million plus to forty nine million plus, is the increase of seventy five point six percent. And also concerned about the amount of money that the municipal budget spends on debt service over the same time has increased from fifteen point eight nine to nineteen point eight four five. So, I'm just concerned about the level of debt that the city is incurring and the amount that the budget supports the debt service. So.
The- You want to do, you want to do this one?
Go ahead. I'll, I'll, I'll follow up you if you want. Okay, so when these two and one more first took office, there was a need to do a lot of capital improvements. And those capital improvements, we did five ordinances in October, your first year, because things had not been completed a few years before that. The amount of money that we're paying in debt service, and we'll have another bond sale this year that's going to actually save us some money, which will lower the debt next year. We're trying to have a sale in one year. Wait three or four more years, have another sale when another issue falls off, so keeping the, the amount that's paid out by the taxpayers relatively consistent. And capital has to be addressed. You can't let everything die down.
Right. So, the, the, so the bonding was for capital improvements for infrastructure that, and with all due respect, there, we, we've created a lot more, I'm going to just say something, we've created a lot more ordinances to create these infrastructure improvements in our tenure than I think previous administrations have for reasons for, for, for the sustainability of Venter in, in, in a, in a, in a mechanical way. So, we've got, you can, we, we have our, we have our, our, our head of department of public works here that's ongoing, and we have some improvements that I think were overlooked in, in years' time. We have, we have new pump stations, we have new, new, uh, new infrastructure in Venter Heights, drainage, um, and, and ongoing. We have a major issue with Venter Heights and the drainage that doesn't take place there. So, we have more to do in those spaces. So, I think the reason you're seeing that debt, that is managed well, it's managed in a, in a, in a, in a financially responsible way so that the taxpayer doesn't see an increase over time, but the city benefits in a structural way. That's our, that's, that's our goal.
Okay, so when you talk about infrastructure, you're not just talking about water and sewer?
No.
Talking about drainage?
Talking about the, the-
Yeah, there, there's more general improvements than there are water and sewer. The, the, the big project that's coming up in Water and Sewer Utility is the lead service replacement project.
Lead service replacement.
The, the general improvements are streets and storm sewers and those sorts of things, building improvements, purchase of equipment. There's, you know, you've, you've been here, you know, there's a whole host of things that need, that are expensive items to deal with.
We get a constant barrage of people asking us, why is my road the worst road in Venter? We have roads that were around the, 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 that are around Edgewater, around, um, around the, 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 the school area, roads that had been overlooked for decades that were almost unpassable. And we, we had a, we had a policy of doing the worst first, and there's still more to do. Uh, and those roads have to be raised and, and invested in. Now we have the boardwalk, which we're, I think we're doing a good job of finding grants for and, and, and executing them. We, we have a great grant team. But, um, these are long-term debts that if we don't do them now, they're going to be emergencies later.
All right, thank you.
If I may, one, one last comment for me, just to echo what you, what you just said, Mayor, we've been very successful in, uh, funding a lot of the capital improvements through, uh, through grants. Uh, but also our debt, our existing debt is well below the statutory limit. I mean, we're, we're not even close to that. So, we, we could borrow a whole lot more if we needed to. So, I think, I think the approach has been pretty conservative, although uh, had to be somewhat aggressive because things have been neglected for so many years.
Yeah, there's quality of life issues. I think if you drive down Venter Avenue now and you see the signalization that happens, you don't have to stop. You can get through Venter in a, in a, without tapping the brakes as much. Those kinds of things are part of quality of life that people come to expect when they move down to a, to a city that's trying to be current. They expect that kind of quality and, and. Yeah, I mean, when you were in office, an ambulance cost a hundred thousand and sixty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Today, it costs three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So, you know, there, you know, it's like anything else, that, that inflation is, um, it not only hits us in the, in the, in the apparatus and devices that we require, but in the infrastructure. And, um, we, we've got a, I think the Public Works Department, especially Ed Stinson and, 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 um, and Mr. Santoro right there are doing a great job of prioritizing things, and the feedback is better than ever. You've got a person in our, in office, Lance Langgraf, who could build a city from scratch that has, that we are getting for free, in a way, that leads that department, that knows where to find the right people and can, with a phone call, can get the kind of attention that the people of Venter City deserve on those kinds of-
What they're talking about.
And he understands what they're talking about.
And one of the things we do at Leon, at least once a year, but also when we're looking at, um, projects, is he'll come out with a spreadsheet that, I mean, it's on the computer, but imagine it like this, and he's taking it way out there-
Yeah.
For the impact on the taxpayer, and, and like you were saying, ways to smooth that out over time.
I don't think we're being frivolous in our spending. We're, we're being, we're being as surgical as possible. And Lance has been a part of some of these original designs, so he knows the infrastructure as well as anybody.
And if, if I may, I said it was, was going to be my last comment. Turns out it wasn't. One of the things to keep in mind is the, the reason that you do things this way, that you bond and borrow money for, you know, capital improvements, is that they have a long-term lifespan. So, the idea is to make sure that people in the future are contributing to the cost of that.
Right.
You're not paying as you go and having today's taxpayers bear all of that burden. And, you know, the, the list of projects, if you look at the capital budget that you can find on a sheet forty B, uh, not to even talk about the numbers, but the types of things, purchase of public works equipment, public works infrastructure, IT equipment, building improvements, fire equipment, fire vehicles, and including ambulances and rescue, police equipment, including vehicles, beach patrol equipment, boardwalk improvements, those are the types of projects that we're undertaking that you want to pay off over a long period of time. You don't want to impose that cost all, all on today's taxpayers.
Yeah, example is the air conditioning units that were done at the school. We bonded that over a period of time, so that one year was impacted by that, that it's still in phase five of the air conditioning replacements at the school that we helped bond.
Yeah, that, that-
Part of those decisions, I'll just briefly, is part of that kind of thinking that Maria spearheaded and, and made us look, not just look good on paper, but be good on paper, raised our rate to an A, to an A plus in a, in our bond, or an A, an A.
Double.
A double A.
A double A, yeah.
Which means that money was cheaper for us. So, all those moving parts, I think we're, uh, uh, I, I think we're doing a pretty good job at.
And thanks for your explanation. And just sidebar, I agree with what Tom said about people that's going to be using the service in the future. Should pay for it. If you remember, I spoke at the School Board of Estimates meeting when the school board wanted to put the money all into one year. And I, I agreed with you, the administration, that it should be spread, and the people that are going to enjoy that service over the years should have to pay for it. And then the last point-
If I recall that first budget from the school that we did this, they had eight million dollars in there, I believe, and with the eight million or million eight, maybe? It was a lot of money in one year.
One point eight million.
One point eight million. Imagine the impact in one year on the tax rate of that, and we, you know.
You've had school tax decrease every single year.
Yeah, and, and we offered to finance it, so it, and it, like Tom said, it spreads it out over the future beneficiaries of that attending the school.
Oh, well, thanks for the explanation. I just have one last point is, you, you probably recall that I've come to several meetings or budget hearings in the past and suggested that the city use a greater percentage of surplus, because after all, it is the taxpayers' money to either have a lesser tax increase, or even a tax increase, or maybe even a tax decrease. In the last five, six years, you've used less than fifty percent of the surplus. This year, I think you used fifty nine percent. And without that, you would have probably a two, two and a half cent more increase. So, I, I think it's, you know, I want to thank you for use, using some of the surplus to keep the tax, uh, increase down a little bit more than what it is, is, as I've suggested in the past year. So, I want to thank you on that.
You're welcome.
I'll add something to that. The increased ratables in this city due to the, the development that's been happening has also, Leon, uh, reduced our tax rate by how much? Another two and a half cents, or?
Uh, let's see, it would be a little over one cent.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's a thirty nine million two dollars.
It was a record year. I think we had, what, thirty nine million ratables this year.
About five hundred and six thousand dollars and increased actual income that was translated into the rate.
Yeah.
Not to be argued at this point, but some people will disagree that we've had too much development and too much, uh, added capacity to our housing stock, but that's an argument for a different day.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the, I don't, unless the, and from the, from the chamber or from the, uh, the Zoom platform? Any comments in the public hearing for, um, our municipal budget twenty twenty five?
Anybody on Zoom who wishes to comment on the municipal budget, please raise your hand or make notice in the chat and you'll be recognized. No?
No. Hearing none, I may have a motion to close a public hearing on the twenty twenty five municipal budget.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Roll call, Lisa, please.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes.
And Mayor, before you vote, I, uh, Commissioner Langgraf has a statement that he's asked to be read at this point, if I may. I apologize for not being able to attend tonight's commission meeting, but I am traveling this week. I support the budget as introduced. We consistently look for ways to save taxpayer money and reduce costs where feasible while remaining committed to providing residents with high-quality services. We make sure our emergency services, including fire, police, and lifeguards, as well as our city hall staff and public works, are equipped with the necessary tools to support the city as efficiently as possible. Our city administrators, city clerk, department heads, police, fire, and lifeguard chiefs have collaborated with our finance department under Commissioner Mento's direction to develop a budget that advances our city. The increase is due to rising salaries, insurance costs, and general expenses. Like any business, we must offer competitive salaries to retain staff, and our city follows the same principle. We have excellent staff in our departments and want to make sure we keep them here in Venter. We are using another five hundred thousand dollars from our surplus in an effort to reduce the tax rate. Maintaining the surplus is key planning for future issues that may arise. Again, no different than a business or a household having an emergency nest egg or account in a case, in case of an emergency. We will continue to improve our infrastructure and public recreation opportunities and provide the best emergency services that we can. I also want to thank Mayor Kribel and Commissioner Mento for their work on the budget in their respective departments. As we have said all along, this team always tries to put the city of Venter in the best position to succeed. I believe this budget continues to put our city in the best possible position as we move forward. Thank you, Commissioner Lance Langgraf.
Very well said.
Yep, thank you. Mento, do you have anything else to, any comments on the budget?
I'd just like to thank staff and, of course, our auditor, who, um, between the two of them, we couldn't do it without you.
Yeah.
So, I, I know you've been working on it. Amy's been grinding away for weeks, if not months, and Leon, without your expertise, resource, and spreadsheets also, um, you're, you're just, you're such a, um, I don't even know what to call it, but you're, you're-
Your value group.
Lucky, you're such a value to us. We're so lucky to have you. So, thank you.
And don't forget the scones.
Don't forget scones. No, I, I'll just, I'll just, I agree, I think you're, both of you have worked together on this countless hours and showed us different scenarios so that we can understand where the, which levers need to be pulled and which pressures are being put on us. And I'm not, um, and, and at the end of the day, this translates into an additional hundred and sixty dollars annually for a home that is, that is valued at assessed at five hundred thousand dollars roughly. Um, there are pressures on us. Uh, police and fire pensions are increased. These are things that are, are, that are, that, that are, that are, that are normal and natural in every city. We find, we land in the middle of the price increases for cities in our nearby. Uh, police and fire pensions, three hundred thousand dollars, insurance and health benefits for our employees, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Utilities like electric that everybody in the city of Venter and Atlanta County is, is taxed with, in a way, a hundred thousand dollars. Police and fire salaries increased with, with no, with, with no real adding of staff of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, uh, despite all those and the, and the growth that we've had, um, uh, I think it's only, uh, we've, using the fund balance and keeping the reserve that we have is, is, is the right way to, to stay fiscally responsible. So, I appreciate everything you've done. Tom, as well. Tom, you've been a big help in understand, helping me understand, uh, the, in shorthand, um, it, with, um, some of, uh, your folksy wisdom.
I was just going to say, thank you, Tom, also. I, I know you kind of corral us and, and sometimes I get into the weeds, but that's just me. So, thank you for putting up with me.
Yep, all right. All right, um, so, um, we're going to vote on the resolution now? So, uh, we have a, may I have a motion to, to vote on resolution twenty twenty five dash one twenty eight, City of Venter, County of Atlantic, State of New Jersey, adopting the twenty twenty five municipal budget?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. May I have a roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Leon. Should we take care of Ocean City now?
See you.
Bye.
Bye, good night.
Okay, um, moving forward with the workshop portion of the meeting, we have no presentations tonight. Uh, we have no department head, uh, reports. Uh, we have any capital discussions? I don't believe so. Uh, we'll have minutes from February thirteenth, twenty twenty five to approve. Uh, we'll have the, uh, we have no ordinance introductions, but we do have a number of, uh, public hearings. Uh, the first one, uh, we will have a, a public hearing for the adoption of the Venter Professional Campus and Redevelopment Plan. Um, and then we will have, uh, that will be the public hearing. We will have, uh, uh, ordinance twen- twenty twenty five zero zero six, which is, uh, fees for land use compliance. Um, we have another ordinance amending chapter one fourteen, um, zero zero seven. Uh, this is, uh, also fees for housing standards and mercantile licensing. This has to do with short-term rentals. Um, any questions on any of those so far? I believe they're, um, kind of in Commissioner Langgraf's court. Um, and then we have, uh, ordinance zero zero eight will be, uh, housing standards. We're removing a subparagraph for clarity in that, uh, in that chapter. And then we have, uh, zero zero nine, which is also, uh, fees. This is, uh, for increasing the fishing pier fees, um, uh, prior to the summer arrival. Any questions on that? Um, then we will have resolutions, uh, by consent. We have, uh, resolution one twenty nine, uh, which is naming towing companies for the next year. Uh, we have resolution one three zero, um, which is, uh, supporting application for a grant. This is for Dorset Avenue. Uh, uh, application for, uh, streetscapes on Dorset Avenue for, uh, transportation. Uh, we, again, we lean on Jim Rattella and his team to create a, an argument for that business district. Um, includes, uh, streetscapes and sidewalks, uh, if we get it. Um, so fingers crossed. Resolution one thirty one is authorizing closing out, uh, escrow accounts, which is typical. Uh, resolution one thirty two is, uh, authorizing, uh, purchaseation, uh, rebid specifications for maintaining, uh, exterior advertising of Venter City Boardwalk Beaches and Business Districts. This is reissuing that, uh, for our banner program in the city. We had no responses from the, the first issuing. Um, so hopefully they'll get out to, uh, to those interested parties. Uh, it's a very popular program and usually sells out. Um, uh, uh, resolution one thirty three is accepting the retirement of Joseph Fussner effective April thirtieth. So, I'll take this moment, um, if you'll, and if you will, um, indulge me um, to, uh, to read a little bit about Chief Fussner on a, um, on a personal level. He's been, um, he's been a really, a really, really valued professional partner through COVID, through a number of, uh, a number of emergencies, um, like the Sacco's Fire, where he was basically shutting down a whole section of the city, um, managing that, managing, not, not just the, not, not just the fire department, but he was there as well, working that fire. Uh, he would come in for emergencies like that, um, as well as parades, block parties, uh, and, uh, things like, uh, the pub, the public safety of all our special events. Um, but, um, uh, and he was always watching social media for things that, um, that seemed out of place to me. We would have communications and then usually follow up before, um, before things would get, uh, out of hand. Um, but always for the serious incidents, for managing major crimes, um, and also, um, holding his own staff accountable um, for, uh, to, 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 to a high standard. Um, he's, he, uh, Chief Fussner has a bachelor's degree from Monmouth University. I won't go through, I won't bore you with too much of this, but he is a highly, uh, a, a, a highly trained individual, has a master's degree in police administration and public policy from University of Cincinnati. Uh, his law enforcement career, uh, began in Venter City, but his municipal career began, uh, working in public works, um, rake in the beach. Uh, I, I, I think, I think he, he, uh, he may go back to that maybe in his retirement. Um, but, uh, uh, his, uh, one of his accolades is he was one of the, um, uh, a DRE officer, an expert in, in, um, in identifying drivers under the influence. Um, that's something that he would be counted on throughout Atlanta County for that skill set. Uh, field training officer, uh, for dozens of officers, um, and, um, uh, promoted to the rank of, of sergeant in twenty twelve. Uh, promoted to the rank of lieutenant in, uh, twenty fourteen, and, um, promoted to the rank of, of, uh, patrol ship camp commander. Um, uh, uh, Chief Fussner promoted to the rank of, of captain in twenty nineteen, and in, uh, twenty twenty one, uh, since twenty twenty one, he's been, uh, chief of police. So, he would, he will be greatly missed, I'm sure, by his staff as well. Um, uh, not always the, not always the, the, the soft and fuzzy, uh, approach to management, but, uh, but you could count on.
I've tried to teach him.
And somebody like, uh, and a, and a, and, and in a, in a department, um, like ours that runs in, in the north of eighteen thousand incidents a year. And everything from vandalism to, uh, burglar alarms- And everything from vandalism to burglar alarms and ambulance calls to, to assist on and, and traffic accidents. We're not just, we're not just a, 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 a seasonal town to the police department. We're, we're a year-round town. So moving forward, do you have anything to add? So we'll take his retirement.
Pretty much everything you said. I mean, Joe was so not, is so knowledgeable in his job. He knew right from wrong and with him, it was either right or it was wrong. He didn't usually blend it in the middle. And he held us accountable too. So, and he was also, I will tell you, there were a couple of times I had to personally talk to him about something that had occurred with me. And he was very helpful. So for that, I'm very grateful. But yeah, he, he knew his stuff. He really does. And very knowledgeable, very smart. And at times very personable too. And we'll give you a couple chuckles, you know?
Thank you. Yep. So we'll, we will, at that point, we will accept that resolution, accepting his retirement. And, and here in the audience, we have the next resolution. 134 will be accepting the appointing chief of police to Joseph Wooten. Here in the audience, Captain Wooten began his law enforcement career in 1996 as a class one officer with the Ventnor City Police Department. After serving as a corrections officer in Atlantic County Justice Facility, starting in 2000, returned to Ventnor as a full-time police officer in 2003. His leadership, your leadership path began in, when promoted to patrol sergeant in 2012, followed by graduating the West Point Command and Leadership Program in 2014. In 2015, he was, he was promoted to patrol lieutenant and in 2020, took on the role of administrative lieutenant, overseeing training, internal affairs, and the Departments of Accreditation. Served as captain since 2022, bringing over two decades of dedication experience and professionalism to the department. I look forward to working with you, Joe. And moving on, we'll have approval of bills and payroll. We have one discussion item. Former Commissioner Kreischer brought up some issues of ambulance billing. If you have, if you have a moment, I'll, I'll just, I'll just address some of the things that you said about that. And I have, we have Chief Cahill here as well that might offer some, some, some color to that conversation. Excuse me while I fumble through some papers. But, so one of the things that, and we take every, we take everybody, we take everybody as, 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 as important information. So we took your, your, your comments, as you said them, you're, you're, I think, I believe you, you were, you basically said that there's a situation that needs to be corrected of us billing residents for, and if you'd like to come up and join us in the discussion, that's fine. Billing residents, you asked us not to bill residents for, for ambulance chart, for non-insured ambulance bills. And I just want to clarify that some of the things you brought up that are, are a little non-quantifiable. The idea that someone may not, may not use ambulance services as frequently for, for a cert, if they, if they fear being billed. And, and the overriding, the overriding, I think, sentiment that the city has is that people need to call emergency services when there's a problem. And the city, the current policy that the city has, and we've discussed it, discussed it with the chief, discussed it internally. The policy is fair, it's financially responsible, it's similar to other cities in a lot of ways. It applies equally to all individuals. So the idea that we can treat one individual differently, whether they're a resident or a guest or a visitor, is kind of off the table. It's not, it, it, it is off the table. Full-time residents, the main concern is ensuring those who use the service and contribute to its costs, contribute to its costs rather than shifting the burden. And I think that's what would happen if we, we took your advice, is shift, that we would be shifting the burden to those people unfairly, to taxpayers, particularly those that may not even use the service. So the idea here is there's no measurable data that the existing policy is a problem. So we don't want to make a change and create a solution where we believe there is no problem at this point. And I'll just ask, I'll just ask Chief Cahill, if you want to take some of your experience. Again, this is a very busy department and ambulance, the ambulance billing helps offset major costs. Ambulance operations are expensive. I can tell you that Chief Cahill and I talk about it a lot. And training is different now. The, these individuals now under Chief Cahill's leadership are all EMTs. The, the, the ability for them to, to keep that training is part of the cost of running, running a, the sophisticated fire department that he runs. So I'll, I'll just take it to, to you then.
Just to give you a broad over strokes of how we came to the current billing system we use. We had used the system that was being under, they did a horrible job. We weren't receiving what we should have been receiving in bills. We finally got rid of them. We took on the company that we're currently using as Corona Health. Corona Health used their matrix of what the standard billing is across New Jersey and nationally, and what insurance companies will accept for billing for transport and emergency treatment.
So if I can just interrupt you for a second, we interviewed a number of companies. This particular company is run by retired police, or fire chiefs in a lot of ways. So these are people that have an intimate knowledge of not just the processes, but the, 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 the costs and the, and the overruns that can happen.
The insurance company input determined what we built for our calls. We, when we put our billing together, I believe the initial bill was $725, was what they say the industry standard is for transport. That's what we used as the base. And then all items that are used on a call, which are no longer able to be used, in other words, disposable items, like oxygen, mass, glucose, and things that we have to replace, they were actually billed per insurance company regulations as à la carte. So basically you were billed for what you used. So now when a resident, homeowner, visitor, anything uses our service in the city, they receive, and I, I'm going to show you this when we're done. This is a current bill that my mother received for use of emergency medical services. On this is a breakdown of the cost. It's the ambulance cost. There's a mileage cost, which is also standard. Then it goes into how payment was received when we transport you. You either show an insurance card. We take that information that gets put into the system. If we don't have a card or you're not unable to produce it, the insurance company get, or pardon me, our billing company gets the insurance information from the hospital. A bill is sent out to your insurance company. When that bill comes back, all different insurance companies pay at different rates, but there is no standard payment rate. So to give you the broad way of explaining this the best is if you have better insurance, they pay more money. Medicare, Medicaid, which is a predominant amount of the people we transport, only pays, I believe it was $230 of our total bill. That bill comes back, that money is sent back to the city. The city then pays a percentage for operating costs to that company. The individual then will get this letter. And this letter is not a bill. It's a statement. And it requests more insurance information. Some people have secondary insurance that wasn't included. If it occurred in a vehicle, that's also covered under your vehicle insurance. So that's another way for the city to be made whole on the total bill. On this bill, it says, and I have to put my glasses on because I can't read anything anymore. Your insurance has paid its portion of the claim. If there is an, an additional coverage for your balance, please notify our office. If you have no coverage for this balance, contact our office to clear your account. So in other words, it's a request for insurance information. If you do not have any insurance, you call and tell them it goes away. We do not pursue billing. We, and we discussed this today, there's money left on the table if the city chose to collect. Like anything else, you use a service, you should pay full restitution for that. We don't do that. So if people use our service and get a bill and they're upset that there's a bill, it's not cheap to run a railroad. Like the mayor said, an ambulance is now $350,000 without a tool in it. The cost of running EMS is going, is exorbitant. The EpiPen is the best example I have. We carry two of them on every ambulance. They cost $700 a dose and they last for seven months. Then they have to be disposed. The expenses of the equipment far outweigh what they're billed, people are billed for. So I know, I can understand if somebody's upset because I don't like seeing like I owe money either. But we're not chasing it.
Thank you.
But it's owed to the city.
Thank you. I mean, the alternative to the current system would shift costs onto taxpayers that, that, that may rarely or never use the system. And it might also be detrimental in a way that encourages people that, to use the system for something that is not as, as, as much of an emergency. We feel that policies should be based on data, not assumptions or hypotheticals, and should be most, first, they should be, people should not have a reticence about using these. That is the first and foremost. And we don't see any data of people not wanting. We, we have a very, we have a, we have call, I, we, we have calls, our call data is go, go up like every, every short town. But the top priority is, is service and fairness to, to everybody, every taxpayer. So if you have any other comments, we're, we're happy to hear.
I want to thank Chief and you guys for a very detailed explanation. I have some comments on some things that were said, but I do feel better that the letter that's sent to the resident says, whatever it says, but it clears the matter up significantly. My question when I came to the last meeting was, does a city send two bills to the resident? And the answer was yes. That's what, but now
Samantha.
With the chief's explanation, it's not a bill, it's a letter. It doesn't say you send the money, it says call us. So I, I, I think that's much better. And I have, I have a better understanding
Okay.
than when I addressed the, the governing body previously. Couple of comments though. Yes, everybody should call. If you have a, a problem, you should call 911 immediately and get an ambulance. However, not everybody thinks that way. They should, but they don't. And while you address them as hypotheticals, I, I think there are real situations that could help. You may not have quantitative data to support it, but I think the, a reasonable person would say that it's, it's possible that that situation could exist. Is there data to prove that? No, but I think it's, we don't know. And for something that you may not collect, I still think it'd be better, and I, I don't know how I feel now, with a letter that the chief is going to give me, that, that may clarify and be sufficient. I, I'd have to think about it. You said that everybody's treated the same, however, you know, resident, visitor, taxpayer, but that's not what the ordinance said that you sent to me. It says in the event of the health insurance of a taxpayer or a year-round resident does not have health insurance. So that was one of the questions I was going to ask tonight. What about a visitor? Your ordinance that you sent me specifically deals with resident or taxpayer. But now I'm hearing that the visitors are treated the same. So just like to you to clarify, do you send, do you send that letter to resident or to visitors?
It's the same letter.
Everybody that is transported or treated by the ambulance gets that same letter. The way the insurance company, billing company does it, all money that is not collected absent the insurance payment is basically written off like it never existed. The money that is not collected from people that aren't residents or outside the city people, when we go neutral aid, is, that basically becomes what they call a bad debt that we just don't go after.
And they don't send that to?
No, everybody gets the same three letters.
Everybody gets the same letter.
The letter that's on your chair, everybody gets the same letter.
Thank you. You think there should be any consideration in maybe amending the ordinance just to say any user of the ambulance, so that volunteer?
Not changing the policy, but for clarity.
I'm sorry?
Not, not changing the policy, but for clarity is what you're suggesting?
Well, the ordinance, the, what you sent me, the ordinance deals with taxpayers or year-round residents. You may, I don't know, just a suggestion, you may look at changing the ordinance, they say any user of the ambulance to include the visitor.
We'll look at that.
So, yeah, and I agree with user fees. I mean, I fought this battle with the fishing pier and, and the money to rehab the fishing pier that people said that, well, it's our taxes, we should be able to use it, you know, not have to buy a membership. So, you know, we, you charge for the beach, we charge Little Lake. I mean, we charge, we have a lot of user fees. You put in a zoning variance, there's, you know, money that's put in escrow. There, there's an application fee. You know, a parking permit is, is a fee. But I, but I disagree with fees for public safety issues. And if, if, if it's all, everything, every user should be charged. Now that we have a new chief Wooten, will we be charging for like police calls that when I, my car gets broken into that I, I mean, where, where do you draw?
Good idea. Yeah.
I know that you charge for, you know, alarms that repeated alarms. Repeated alarms, you know, if they, they just have alarm after alarm after alarm, you do charge for that. But again, when it comes to public safety, I mean, I think this is a slippery slope and, you know, we're going to be start charging for, you know.
When I had a, when I had a storefront, I had a glass alarm. Every time the wind would blow, the, the burglar alarm would go off in Linwood. And after it happened three times, they would send me a bill.
As I said, I agree, I agree with that. You know, if you have a faulty alarm or something, but you know, you, you, the city's going down this user fee as we.
And we're not suggesting.
Well, well, getting back, I think it's a slippery slope that we're, and again, I don't know how I feel because the letter is different than what I was originally under the impression. But, you know, the, one of the things was saying that ambulance services are very costly and, and we need to charge for that service and collect money. I just, it's a matter of opinion, it's a matter of perspective. I disagree. And I think it's a slippery slope because are we going to be talking next year that, you know, the budget is two cents, we need to start charging for police calls? I, I, I don't know. But, you know, the philosophy of the city is user fee, as was explained with the ambulance service. I'm just concerned we're going down a, a slippery road.
Mayor Kreischer, if I may, I, I don't think that we're ever going to see a day when we're charging for police services. We charge for ambulance services because insurance companies pay for those services. I don't think they pay for police to roll out. So, you know, back in the day, ambulance service was not billed to people. Many, many towns still have volunteer companies. But even they started billing once they learned that insurance companies and Medicare and Medicaid would cover those, at least a portion of that cost. So that, that's the genesis of ambulance billing by municipalities. There's no such insurance program for police services.
Or complicated, or even contemplated.
Oh, well, today, again, I don't want to belabor the point. I, I may feel different after I look at the letter from that Chief Cahill spoke about, but you don't have to tell me about the ambulance service. I was the one that started it after much convincing by Chief, the late, great Dan Cahill, the chief, because I don't want to send bills or letters out, out to residents for something that they always receive for free.
Alright.
I understand that, but.
And it was my understanding, I'm the one that talked to you, that we send out two bills. But now I understand it's two statements, but that's what I get for returning a call while I'm on vacation.
Thank you for your comment.
Thanks, everybody for your consideration.
You're welcome.
I don't know if I agree with you, but thank you for taking the time.
Alright, we don't have to agree. Thank you. Any other discussion items? Do you have anything, Commissioner Mento?
No.
Alright, we'll have a public portion now. The, they have the, this is a portion where anyone interested in speaking about anything that we've talked about on the agenda so far, may, I would like a motion to open the meeting for public portion.
Make the motion.
I'll second. Please take a roll call.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Anyone wishing to speak about anything in the public portion on anything we've addressed so far on the agenda? Seeing Mayor.
Phil brief.
Kreischer.
But I, I just want to go on the record of echoing everything you said about Chief Fussner.
Oh.
You know, I, I swore the chief in as an officer. I would get monthly reports of police. of police activity. He was always at the top of the list when it came to motor vehicle stops, tickets issued. I mean, he, he did his job. And when I saw that month after month after month, I knew that Chief Husner had a future in law enforcement.
That's right.
Uh, and Ventnor has had a long history of excellent chiefs. And I'm sure Chief will be just another one in that list of great chiefs that we've had. I just want to go on the record about Chief.
Thank you for your comments. Any public comments from the Zoom forum? Jim?
Anybody from Zoom wishes to question or comment any of the items spoken about? Please make yourself known and you'll be recognized. No.
Hearing none, I have a motion to close public portion.
Make the motion.
I'll second Lisa, roll call please.
To?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. I have a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting and call to order the regular session of, of today's commission meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, roll call Lisa.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. May I have a motion to approve minutes of February thirteen, twenty twenty five, regular meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, roll call Lisa.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. We have no ordinance introductions. We have um uh ordinance uh for public hearing, may have a um, we have a motion to open for public hearing, ordinance zero zero five, adopting the Ventnor City Professional Campus redevelopment plan.
I'll make the motion.
Um, I'd like to make an announcement that the redevelopment plan, oh, I'm sorry. So right, I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. So uh, in the is there any public comment? Except from Mayor Kreischer.
Tim Kreischer. I hate to keep delaying the meeting, but it just happens to a lot of interesting things on the agenda tonight. So I, I attended the planning board meeting last night and uh the Phillies was a close game, so I was a little slow in developing my thoughts. So I'm going to read pretty much uh what I wrote uh as opposed from memory. Uh, first, I want to acknowledge the members of the planning board. I, I, I thought they did extreme due diligence in the subject. They asked a lot of questions. They expressed a lot of concerns um such as density, number of units, the amount of green space, uh, the uh need for commercial on the Ventnor Avenue site. So they were very diligent and I've been somewhat critical of the board in the past with the number of variances they've been given. So I want to make sure they acknowledge when I think they do something right, that I acknowledge that as well. So my, my thanks. And, and they all expressed the importance of this site to the perception of Ventnor and the need to create a wow factor. So I, I just want to point that out to the governing body, although you sit on it, mayor. But I want uh to go on the record that I thought they did a great job. The end of the night and today, I know you're going to read a statement probably will confuse me more. Not your fault, but just the process. Where, where is the process now? Uh, what, it will, you, I know you and Commissioner Langgraf expressed that you wanted to see some changes. Will there be another introduction? Will there be another plan with those amendments? Will there be another public hearing? Exactly how do you proceed from here?
Yeah, here, here's, here's what's going to happen. And that, that's not really a comment about the contents of the ordinance, but that's, that's neither here nor there. The, the, the vote is going to be tabled or the ordinance is going to be tabled until uh the next meeting, two weeks from now. Um, because there are changes that will be made.
Okay. So um.
So some of the concerns that you brought up that were, you know, echoed from the myself and the, the rest of the board are going to be incorporated into the actual ordinance. So that's what we're going to be moving forward with uh at a different time. So there's going to be a second reading and a hearing.
Yeah. So this public hearing is going to be carried until the meeting of the twenty fourth.
So um is something that just came up. Who? That these are all going to be townhouses where the prop, the owner owns the townhouse and the land. And I guess you won't need to have a subdivision hearing because of the redevelopment process and the, the uh that it's governed by the plan.
There's going to be an association and there'll be, there'll be an association document that uh that binds that, those townhouses together that they'll have their own, um, they'll have their own set of bylaws. But the, the subdivision itself is what this process i- is meant to um codify.
Yeah. So but e- each townhouse is going to be a separate unit all to itself. Will they have to go through a subdivision process or is that the purpose of the plan is to circumvent? Circumference is a bad word, to, to not have to go through that process because the plan spells out that these will be individually owned.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, mayor, I would suggest you ask that question of the planning board when they have their next meeting.
I think that's exactly. It's a question for that planning board when they get into the nuts and bolts of that.
Use, I have, I may, I didn't have time to last night to address it, but I'd like to give you some suggestions that I think that you should consider so that when you develop this plan.
Again, this isn't the forum for that. Make, make your comments.
So, so the end result is that I come up the next meeting with the greatest idea in the world, which now a blind squirrel finds an acorn every now and then, and somehow you guys didn't think of it.
No, that.
The, the ordinance is done, introduced and you, you haven't had time to consider it.
If you.
Uh, that, that, okay, I, you know, I'll make those suggestions then, but I just think in the process of things that it would be better to hear my suggestions.
I think you're interpreting the, the motion that's on the table right now. This is, this is a public hearing for the professional campus redevelopment plan, but not, and we're, we're in the process of having, of carrying it forward to the next commission meeting um for a second reading. There, it is a, it is a work in progress. It doesn't happen at this forum, in this meeting, at this time. I think your three minutes are up.
Okay, so you will not have time to consider my suggestions?
Not at this point.
To incorporate them into your, into your plan?
No.
Okay.
But a- again, it's going back to the planning board. They will, they will be conducting further business on this. You can make your suggestions there. They will then again submit something to this body for consideration and they may or may not adopt it.
Right. Okay, so I'm going to make this announcement now. So the redevelopment plan's second reading hearing is being carried to the next commission meeting, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, commission chambers at five thirty P M. And that a new note, that no new notice will be published. Thank you. May I have a motion to close public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero zero five?
Mayor, you're going to, it's being carried.
It's being carried, right. So I don't need to, don't need to close it. All right, I'm done. Excellent. Um, that was easy. Uh, next is ordinance adoption.
Mayor.
We're skipping that. Zero, zero, six.
Okay, if I could, I think procedurally you may want to make a motion just to table that for right now, so that way it's at least closed for this particular meeting. And you can carry it to the next meeting and make a motion to move it from the table.
Tabling ordinance adoption.
Healing the public hearing.
Public hearing. So it's carried over. So make a motion.
For the purposes of carrying it.
Okay, so would you state that for me then?
We need a motion to table the um public hearing for the purposes of carrying it to the next meeting.
All right.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second as described. Lisa may have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. All right, we have um next we have ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero zero seven, zero, zero, six. That didn't include zero, zero, six adoption? Or no?
Do the public hearing?
No, you just closed zero, zero, five. Took about nine steps to get it.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry.
Public hearing for zero, zero, six.
San land use. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm caught. This is fees. So uh, we have a motion to open ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero, zero, six. Uh, amending chapter one fourteen entitled fees. Uh, certificate of land use compliance.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty open, uh, open to the public hearing, sorry. Any comments from the Zoom platform? Or ordinance zero, zero, six?
Comment on ordinance zero, zero, six? No.
Hearing none, may have a, none in the audience. May I have a motion to close public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero, zero, six?
We'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. May I have a motion to open, for a, may I add a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero, zero, six?
Make the motion.
I'll second Lisa.
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. May I have a motion to open for public hearing, ordinance zero, zero, seven, housing standard fees?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second Lisa, roll call please.
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
All right, any, doesn't look like there's anyone in the audience. Any, any, any comments for public hearing in the Zoom platform?
Anybody on Zoom wish to comment on ordinance zero, zero six?
Seven.
Seven.
Thanks.
Lost.
No apology necessary.
No.
No. Hearing none, may have a motion to close public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero, zero, seven.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second Lisa, roll call please.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
I have a motion to, yes. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance zero, zero, twenty twenty five dash zero, zero, seven as described?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, roll call Lisa.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. I have a uh motion to open for public hearing, ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero, zero, eight. This is uh removing subparagraph K from uh chapter one thirty eight.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, roll call Lisa.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes.
Anybody comment on zero, zero, eight? No.
Hearing no comments from the public. I have a motion to close public hearing on ordinance zero, zero, eight.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, roll call Lisa.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. A motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero, zero, eight as described?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, roll call Lisa.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. And I have a motion to open to public hearing, ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero, zero, eight. This is fees for fishing pier.
Nine.
Have a motion?
Is it nine?
Zero, zero, nine. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll second, roll call Lisa.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. Open for public hearing, anyone in the Zoom platform regarding fees at fishing pier?
Anybody wish to comment on resolutions, your, or ordinance zero, zero, nine? No.
No. Hearing none, can I have a motion to close public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero, zero, nine fees?
I'll make the motion.
Second, I will second, uh, I have a roll call Lisa.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero, zero, nine, entitled fees for the fishing pier?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Roll call Lisa.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. All right. Awesome. May I have a motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty five dash one, two, nine through twenty twenty five dash one, three, four, by consent, as described in the work, in the workshop portion of the meeting.
Make the motion.
I'll second. Roll call Lisa.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, may I have uh, Amy, may I have bills, bills and payroll, please?
Payables for this period is four million, four hundred sixty seven thousand, four hundred seventy seven dollars and thirty three cents. Payrolls for this period, six hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred seventy one dollars and twenty cents.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve bills and payroll, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, roll call Lisa.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. Um, any announcements or safety reports that not, none here, uh, any commissioner report, Commissioner Mento? No. No. No, um, events coming up you want to plug?
Well.
The.
I don't know if we sold out yet, but chef's night out coming up in May, so.
That's the first event of the spring, I guess.
One out of ten, you better go online and uh see where you can get your tickets.
Right. Chef's night out and the block party's the next.
Also in May. So we have those two events coming up. It's hard to believe May is here.
It's here. All right, um, I, I have a, I don't have any report myself. Uh, I will, so may I have a motion to open the meeting to public comment for uh any topic under discussion? For at any topic at all?
Make the motion.
I'll second, roll call Lisa.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. Anyone in the Zoom?